I read.
Your paycheck to me donated the charity.
Somebody said twelve.
I pray so, Father, we thank you so much, the beautiful day Lord, as you blessed this meeting. The decisions of lady here. Be pleasing unto you, Lord, and ask you to continue to bring your people back to you, continue with give us our grace. And our forgiveness, and thank you so much for what you did for us so many, many years ago that we may have everlasting life. I ask you go with each new family represented here, keep them safe and out of harm's way. The Lord send us some writing in Jesus' name, I pray.
Amen. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Why don't you keep going?
At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on their agenda may speak to the court, no formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
Seeing no takers, we'll go ahead and move on to an increasing project scheduled on staffing. We're right now. Start today, Eli's out of town today, so we'll start tomorrow.
Is it still at nine o'clock tomorrow?
I will verify. I'm gonna say. If you were there eight, I'm gonna tell him.
We're trying to get our one mile tops so that we can come and help. We're working hard as fast as we can, we've got two more culverts to put in, and we're hauling material. So hopefully we'll get it done.
And Thursday's the day you're gonna be gone, huh? With your lowered.
No Friday.
Friday. And then, I don't know, Thursday or Friday, I might be gone, so if I get tires to go out again. So, I don't know, what do you think Thursday or Friday?
Well, Friday, uh. Change, right? Yeah, sure, let's, just say you're gonna be there Friday. Because if you say that you're gonna be there, it'll rain, just show up.
Are we gonna work on Fridays?
Yeah, it's up to y'all.
A lot of overtime. It's up to y'all.
I got planned Friday.
I don't, I mean, my guys paid on care, but they'll have to come out of your budget.
All right, anything else going on? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the EMS revolution. Revolution. Are you having a revolution? Oh, yeah. This is the revolution of the Michigan Court of Superior County, Texas, in support of Senate Bill thirteen seventy-seven and House Bill three thousand to provide critical funding for rural emergency medical services. I don't know if y'all know it, but there's a bill that is out there right now to basically give rural funding to smaller communities that have EMS, and it's up to three hundred thousand for our size.
They call it the SB twenty-two.
I like the SB twenty-two.
By Perry.
Yes. Now, last week I found out that they took out some of the wording for personnel, so it would go towards equipment and not personnel. You wanna speak a little more for it?
Sure. Goodness, Commissioner's Court, this bill was heard yesterday, actually, at the Capitol. We had one regional, oh, two regional representatives. We had a couple of others speak on EMS behalf in regards to this bill. The wording about the personnel was to assist and help personnel in training, to help staff shortages within our region in West Texas, as well as across the state. That wording was taken out, and the Capitol equipment and other equipment was left in. It was testified yesterday. We had a congressman that testified on our behalf, and so it was well represented. I think it'll go through, especially with help with resolution. I appreciate if you guys could get that through, it'd be great. But it really is gonna benefit us on ambulance purchases, where I see it really helping out Capitol COTS and ambulance purchases and monitors is what we're looking at. But the wording initially said just ambulances, and I think they got it to say equipment and expanded it just a tad, so we'll see as it keeps rolling through how it comes out. But right now, what's, the personnel issue you got taken out, we'll fight for that next year and see if we can get that added into the next year or the next two years. But if we can get this through with just the Capitol expenditure, that will, that'll be three hundred thousand funds that would be, that we can apply for, that could go to an ambulance or Capitol expenditure, which would be huge.
So that would cover about three quarters of an ambulance, wouldn't it?
Oh, about a hundred thousand, yeah. If they hold, if those ambulances hold, yeah, so. But it will, it'll definitely pay for remounts and different things like that if we choose for a hundred percent coverage, so. It's similar to our extraordinary funds grant that we applied for when we crash or disable an ambulance in some form, and, but this won't have any of those. Descrip, or those additives added to it, it'd just be a straight grant, so. We haven't had something like this since oh four, so if we can get something like this passed through, it'd be great.
I know there's a lot of communities that have ambulance service whatsoever. I mean, Borden, no ambu service.
They're working on it.
Yeah, no ambu service. There's lots of them that, and you, the thing that I think that's spurring them on is the fact that, yeah, you may not live in a rural area, but you may drive through it, or your family may drive through it and have an accident or a heart attack, and then you have ambulances two hours away.
Yeah.
You don't make it.
Well, you have communities like three in Borden or Gale, that don't really have a whole lot of funding for EMS, and this would, you know, essentially buy that ambulance for them. And so, help with staffing and that, we're working on the staffing, it'll come through. We are looking at some funds through the Workforce Solutions Group. Hopefully, they can provide us some grant funds through, through educational grants for like paramedic and EMT school. We're still looking through that, but, but this is more tied to equipment. It was meant for equipment, we tried to add on some personnel, and so hopefully we can get it through. Carly and Seminole went down, I was supposed to go down and speak, but I got rerouted to run a rack meeting in Abilene, so. She went to Austin, I went to. We're trying to get it to, to pass, and Judge Michael Och at Littlefield is, I think, the founder of the bill.
Right, yeah, he's spearheading.
He's spearheading it as well. Any other question?
Thank you, yes.
Appreciate it.
So I will make the motion to pass Resolution zero four one two zero. Zero four one, zero four zero one two zero two five, I'll get it right. Resolution in support of Senate Bill thirteen seventy-seven and House Bill three thousand to provide critical funding for rural emergency, emergency medical services.
Same.
All in favor? Thank you on that. That can help. Not just us, but the water. Fees at the Armory for Texas Brotherhood Ride, discuss and consider waiving Armory fees for the Texas Brotherhood Ride September seventh, twenty twenty-five. This ride, it's a bicycle ride that goes from Lovett to Houston. It's six hundred miles, nine hundred miles, six, so many miles.
It's long ways.
Well, it'd be six hundred miles because it's.
Motorcycle. I think it's motorcycle.
Is it motorcycle or bicycle?
Bicycles.
Oh, it's bicycle.
Yeah, because they're riding about nine eighty to a hundred miles a day. And they have support vehicles and all of that.
This is something we've done.
Yes, they, yes, they come through every year. This is, I believe, their eleventh year to do this. The request is to wait fees at the Armory for them to stay the night in Snyder. So this would be their first stop on their way to Houston from Lovett. It's a, it's for fallen EMS, law enforcement, emergency services, firefight, that type thing. Instead of requests to waive the Armory fees for them to stay the night, they're working on getting donations for the meals and all of that.
Same.
All in favor? Thank you, yes, appreciate that. All right, Court, consider taking bids for leasing of space next to Toll Park Park. I didn't forget my password. So the. I was approached about space within Superior County. It originally started with Dermot, and I told them there's nothing at Dermot, it's Amazon that originally approached me. And they're looking for a space to set a container eight by forty. They're looking for a hundred and sixty by fifty-three feet, something like that, to be able to place a container and drive around, electrical access, which there's poles right there, they would provide their own. And access to restrooms. I mentioned a few places to them, and they came back with this one. Wasn't able to get everything up.
And this is Amazon that owns the wind farm?
Amazon, Amazon, big Amazon, yeah. Delivery service and all of that, so they're looking for a place to put their container to deliver from. And talking to Mike about it, the proper way to lease out space would be to put it up for bid. And so I asked them if they were interested in going that process. It's up to y'all whether we're interested in leasing a space out. So at the barn on the southeast corner where, where they have the, the doors, it's, there's a pad right by, right by that concrete pad, and it's just open space right now, there's power right there, the restrooms are right there, so it would have that.
Right on the west side of the pavilion?
Yes.
And they'd be using the restroom at that pavilion?
Yeah, same, yeah, yeah.
One thing I see about parking lots already falling apart right there, right there.
Well, it would be up on that concrete slab.
They gotta get to it somehow.
True. Well. While we're out there, the firefighters who might make some material up there. It'll be pretty close.
Make failures in that parking lot.
So it just needs to be ready. That's why I've racked it right there. In this area right in here. Of course, we wouldn't want to get too close back here, so they still have the defensive there, but.
That's the entrance to the park.
Yeah, yeah, the door is over here to go in there. And they have.
The third wash pad right there.
Right.
And. Matt.
Matt was okay with that.
So they'll have to enter.
Yeah, they would enter probably either here or over here.
You can see the erosion of the crust earlier right here.
Yeah.
That's a bit bad.
You could have them come in from this direction, or they could come in from over here, this is open now. They could just come in this side.
And you, we have to go out for bids.
Yes, today, yeah.
Will they deliver our stuff on time?
I can ask.
I'm Prime member, and I never get the Prime stuff.
And there was a time when it was next day, it really was next day.
Twenty twenty was about the time that stopped. I already think that.
Opened it, opened it.
Can't worms. I wouldn't think so.
Because they have a, what, they have a container, they're gonna have somebody working in that container?
Not in the container, no, it's for deliveries and.
So we're gonna create any job, like, is there gonna be somebody, like, more delivery people, like, local delivery?
I'm not sure, I haven't asked, but I certainly can't ask.
Because like in Lovett, you know, they have a distribution center, and I know this is not that, but they hire people to go, they go there and they get their stuff and they go and deliver all.
Right.
Would that be, that would be something that they would.
It sounds like that's what they're trying to do, is get people over here into our area to deliver directly for Amazon instead of relying on.
The postal service?
Yes.
That'd be, that's true.
Definitely, and I mean, they have a lot of Uber Eats and stuff, and they.
So, and this could be their first step towards doing something like, like, something like that, I don't know, but.
Get drum delivery.
If it works out, then maybe they build a warehouse. Yes.
Send out the drums from there, we get drum delivery, just drop it in the yard.
And they'll have to deal with the drones getting shot. Maybe the container opens up.
That could be scary, yeah.
I could do that in this area, it might get shot down.
It might. But there's a power pole right there, they could, they could get electricity right there, or if you wanted to look at, in the agreement, if we paid on the bid to provide power for them, either way. And that can be discussed in the negotiations, if that's.
Any idea of what they're saying that they'll pay in a lease?
Yes, sir, but I don't know that I should say that in open court. It's fair.
Maybe, maybe executive session or something like that, right? You don't wanna other, I mean, you don't wanna give the bid away, for sure, so that's smart. I, I make a motion, I'm gonna go out for bids for leasing a concrete pad in Toll Park for whomever would want to do.
Before we get to second on this, I do wanna mention that we have done agreements with UPS in the past to set containers out there. So, but they're not there all the time, this would be there all the time, this, they only do that during holidays, so, all in our favor. All in favor?
When are you going to open bid?
First meeting in May. Six, is it? Y'all okay with first meeting in May?
Six.
Six. All right, Court, consider getting bids for new Zoll ventilators?
Yes. Judge, Commissioner's Court, I, for any clarification on that, it's supposed to be called sell.
Oh.
For selling.
I was wondering why you'd be buying more. It's like, why?
Yeah, this is, this is for the sale, I don't know if we need to rewrite that and come next court meeting, or if we're good to proceed.
Well, it'd be getting bids to, to sell the Zoll ventilators. I don't know, it's not the new, I don't know what Mike would say.
Well, let's proceed for now, and then if we need to clarify.
Yeah, I'm not in a big hurry, so if we need to redo it, we can, but. So this is for the Zoll impact vent, so Dr. David desired us to kind of move in a different direction with our ventilators, which is why in our Capitol expenditure, I mentioned purchasing a Hamilton ventilator. Hamilton ventilator, we found out through COVID that non-invasive CPAP and BiPAP, which is a continuous positive pressure airway that basically keeps the lungs inflated and helps with respiratory rates and oxygen delivery, worked better on the Hamilton than they did the Zoll. The patients didn't struggle as much, and so we are transitioning all of our fleet to the Hamilton T-one ventilators. The Zoll ventilators are more complicated to use, these are touchscreen, very simple to use, plug and play a lot of it. Plug and play a lot of it. And so, uh, we have made that transition and are now, um, having these Zoll vents sitting on the shelf. And so I would like to go out bids, for bids to, to get rid of them so that they're not sitting on the shelf and somebody else can use them. Um, I would prefer that they be sold, I guess we could talk about this when we open bids, but to a medical, some sort of medical company. Don't really want to give, how do I say this politely? Um, somebody not in the medical field, ownership of a ventilator from the county, so.
Oh, I've got the question to the county attorney. Will.
Okay.
Set on the previous.
Sounds good.
Are court consider covering? This is what you had in the budget, right?
Yes, this is in the budget. I put fifty thousand down on it. Financing three years, we'll pay that or buy that.
So total three payments of twenty-four thousand two seventy-seven forty-nine.
Right.
Any thoughts or concerns?
I already got a question. I make motion, we approve the contract, precinct two's kids here and allow the judge to sign.
Okay. All in favor?
What are you gonna do to your old?
The park.
Got it.
Oh, that's what, yeah. All right, uh, let me do the Midwest Rural Teams Council Meeting update real quick. It won't take long, promise. Um, this is the, um, group of county judges in our region for Tech Stock, that are on this board. And we get together and we score projects on which one should be first and last. Don't know if it's gonna make an impact on what Tech Stock actually does, but it could. Projects can be nominated. I have a project nomination form that can be nominated at any, at any time, anywhere in our region. So if you're in Fisher County and you see something over there that needs to be fixed, that can, that does.
Can you email us?
Absolutely. I, I will. So the scoring, there were twenty-five different projects that we scored. And also while we did those scoring, they gave us an update on the projects in the different regions. Like this one, uh, they're gonna have competition now to see who can do best, but one guy provided a spreadsheet of what they're doing. In Shackelford, Jones, Callahan and Taylor Countings, Anthony is gonna do that next time, I think, our, our engineer. Um, he said that they are starting on one eighty and eighty-four, both projects east of us from courthouse on Monday all the way out. They're gonna start working on that and eighty-four as well. So those are big projects that they're working on. Admin E, they just poured and then they're about to pour, uh, pour something else and then work underneath it. So, those are the big projects here in Skerrit County. The ones that, uh, were scored throughout the region, Jones, Fisher County, uh, turning that state highway fifty-seven into a super two. Jones, Fisher County to Shackelford County, US one eighty, turn it into a super two. Callahan County FM six oh three to US two eighty-three, turn that into a super two. One, two, three, four, five. The top five are super twos. State highway thirty-six ninety-two. And then you get to Howard County, US eighty-seven. US eighty-seven to interstate standards for future I, I twenty-seven corridor. Uh, was number six. Jones County FM seven oh seven and FM sixteen, six oh five. Uh, remove curve in FM sixteen, oh, six oh five and create a T intersection at FM seven oh seven. Nolan County was next with Wyden Road at state highway seventy and One Wood Frontage Roads to I twenty. Y'all know where that. Yeah, yeah. And that was probably one of the ones I scored the highest on there. Um, Skerry County, US one eighty, FM sixteen ten, Wyden Road, uh, on sixteen oh six. And then there's a whole bunch of other ones. They also mentioned, uh, they reminded me that, uh, sixteen seventy-three, they are starting to work on that. So, up in.
Super two.
It creates, um, passing lights.
Like eighty-four counties?
Yeah. Yeah.
You carry thirty miles.
Yeah, so, you know, you have one lane, you'll.
Get the little areas.
Yeah, do that in my truck, let's just widen.
Right. So anyway, that's kind of an update on what they're doing. Uh, I said it was brief, but we'll meet again in July. And, uh, know of any projects, write them down and then we'll do a, do the nomination form.
So you said one eighty east? Unless they're going to put this.
They started milling this morning right there at eighty-four.
They're gonna come this way.
Coming toward the corridors.
Okay. You'll see, they didn't finish out there, but.
Right.
Cause they went this far off of their, off the pavement at like ten foot on their right away. Cutting the asphalt down, but.
Right, yeah. But they're, they're starting those projects. I told Anthony, he's probably gonna get a lot of calls. Says he's doing both eighty-four and, uh, one eighty, and it's.
I can imagine. At eleven oh five or thirty miles out there. Where they're getting all kinds of compliments out there.
Cause it's terrible. You know, Garza County is not in our region. We're the furthest west in the region, so. I don't think he'll go into Garza County.
And there's a sixteen seventy-three at Pluvant?
Is it sixteen seventy-three?
Cause ours is. It's sixteen seventy-three goes right by the smatter.
It's one that comes up the camp.
Twelve sixty-nine.
No, not six.
Twelve sixty-nine.
Twelve sixty-nine, that's it.
They've been working on that for a while.
Sixteen seventy-three goes right by the smatter. Great yard.
Sorry, Jess, really didn't realize it. Okay, uh, do we wanna do purchasing or personal policies first?
Doesn't matter to me. Y'all are the ones who request the purchasing policy on there. My updates won't be till later, so. I will have a lot, but being slated.
Okay, well, let's go down the line. We'll start with the personal policies. Starting with, at the beginning, basically, uh, not of the beginning of the policy, but, uh, five point one four was the first one, I believe, that we discussed. Lateral transfers, level transfers, movement of employee. Really, the only change that's being requested here is to remove, um, wording. Must be agreed upon in writing by both department heads. Is that my understanding of this?
Yes, sir, it is.
Any thoughts on?
Changing.
Changing that. Do you wanna explain?
Well, because, I mean, whether you agree or not, the employee can quit and if another person wants to hire the employee, that is their choice and they can do so. So, uh, the department heads or elected officials are agreeing to that. I mean, it, it's within reason. I guess we should all kind of get along and, and just let things happen because it's gonna be the employee's choice if they wanna leave your office to go to another office. Um, legally, I mean, what happens if you don't agree to that? You know, so.
So if the employee quits in order to do it, to go around that, then y'all have a huge amount of paperwork to redo?
Well, there's, I mean, there's not. From the history of me being here, there's been, I mean, yeah. So I'm like, I think, I, I think it was put there for people to get along in case something like that did happen. And so, I mean, I understand it, but we have no standing on it.
I've always told anyone that wanted to transfer to my precinct, they would need to have their department head to say, that's okay, do it. Cause we don't need chiseling in this courtroom.
No, we do not need it anywhere.
And, and that's right. I have had, uh, foremen to come into the courtroom and throw a fit. When even though the commissioner and I both, I mean, he told me, he came to my office and said, hey, he's good hand. Am I getting along? Would you be able to take you?
Right.
Have an opening? And I would say, yes. Well, the foreman comes in to the courthouse and accuses me of stealing his.
His person.
His, which I understand that.
Yes.
But, I mean, he should talk to the commissioner of the thing, not me.
I, you would think.
Then came into my office and threw a fit too. But that didn't last long. But yeah, it's, I think, something like that, it needs, you know, to keep it civil. If somebody wants to leave my precinct, I would, I don't want them to stay.
That's it, yeah.
I hate to lose someone that's really good, but if they feel like they could do better somewhere else, I'm happy for them.
Yes.
Who do you want to leave that in there or take out? It doesn't matter.
Maybe you can instead say it must be, maybe you can say when possible, agree with both. Because like if they leave an elected official and they go to another elected official, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's amicable and it's the greatest thing to do, but sometimes when they leave one, the person is not happy about it.
Does it, does it need to be in writing? I think it's what we're, yeah, with really.
Yeah.
The crux of it is.
Yeah.
Well, I'm like, carry my employer. I mean, if he wants to leave, that's.
Why would you wanna keep somebody that's.
Don't wanna leave.
Uh, just like in, in another thing was I had a guy that's living in another precinct and he said, you know, I'm, I'm driving all this way to come to work. Do you mind? No, I'm not gonna hold you back. I mean, it's, it's good for the county because you're not burning all that gasoline coming all the way out from another precinct. I, he personally, I don't care.
So you're okay with it.
I don't care whether it's in there or not.
Where are we? I'm like, they'll, they don't.
Yeah.
He's not gonna stay. The simpler we can keep it, the better.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna go on to six point five. Basically adding at the end of the overtime work, um, is adding C emergency event policy. Can you explain?
And because when certain things happen, and like, um, and Jason will know because he's worked on the emergency policy, if we do not have certain things in our policy, then if an event does happen, um, it can really restrict us on this. And this is just making sure that we are flowing correctly that our emergency policy and our personnel policy are kind of, cause they're kind of part of each other, that this will allow for what is in the emergency policy and for overtime work employees like Roden Bridge or Sheriff's Office EMS or whatever, that that policy can come into effect. So there's no differentiating this to, it's just one flow.
And FEMA and TVM will not reimburse if there's not emergency policies on this stuff.
Yes.
Right.
So.
And they will not reimburse if it just says follow FEMA guidelines, yes.
Yes, it has to be written. I would feel like more.
So y'all okay with that change?
What is, what should we?
Uh, we're, uh, we're in the policy. So we talked about lateral, lateral transfers, removing other requirement for, uh, it to be in writing between, uh, department heads or elected officials. And then we covered six point five emergency event policy, adding that in six point five. Six point nine, holidays work. This is regular full-time employees. Talking about adding inability double, double time, um, for holidays. And we talked about adding, no, I'm sorry, Mike. There's a couple of things here, right?
Yeah, well, I, I think they, they separated out, my stomach is super hungry, y'all. I'm just sorry. Um, it's part of your leave time. It is. Um, this one I need to add the part-time, double pay on that one. And, and then the one that we're talking about, they're gonna go together is the sheriff's office and emergency response, I guess. Personnel will be the hundred and eighty. No, hundred and twenty days. Thank you. And if they cannot use it within that timeframe, um, instead of losing it and forfeiting it, which has been our policy currently, that, um, they will, they can be paid out for it.
And faulty in here doesn't show, but we changed this a few years ago to where they, uh, get sixty days or they use it or live it within sixty days.
That would just for the holiday.
For holiday, correct, yeah. So, um, with sheriff's department, their situation is that, uh, they've lost turnover and or they're extremely busy, whatever's going on with them, they are, their employees aren't able to use that holiday in that timeframe. So I've had some that have lost, uh, since the first of the year and even before then. So looking at, uh, changing that language to a hundred and twenty days for sheriff's department, uh, if it was on, uh, if the holiday that they haven't been able to use, allow them a hundred and twenty days to use that. Uh, and then bringing that back to the first of the year so that some of those employees that, um, missed out on some of those holidays this year that might have just lost them in the last couple of weeks. So they can get those back from January first. And that has been fitted with the county.
Yes.
Can we add EMS to that? Sheriff slash EMS?
Well, uh, we.
Emergency person, person.
Emergency.
Or first responders. I don't know how you would word that.
We could do first responders slash emergency. And that's respond, personnel. I don't know what kind of wording. Is the correct.
First responders will cover it. Yeah. Was also, um, mentioned about, uh, same thing with other departments that potentially specifically Roden Bridge, that if there was a holiday, uh, that wouldn't been able, hadn't been able to use it. And there's an emergency and they have to work on that holiday. Providing up to a hundred and twenty days for those, for your own departments as well. I, I don't know who brought that up, but.
I cannot remember, to be honest. I've talked to many people.
Is that something that y'all, really y'all need also or is sixty days sufficient for Roden Bridge?
I would like, like, like to pay even for everybody, in my opinion.
Well, it's not everybody because, uh, that, this is, we're, we're really talking about emergency services on this part. If we made it even for everybody, a hundred and twenty days for everybody, you're talking about, uh, departments that generally are gonna be here after an emergency, you know. My office, treasurer's office, auditor's office, library, you know, those types of offices won't need a hundred and twenty days because they're generally not gonna be that shorthanded.
And usually what we run into far as Roden Bridge all the time in effect, we'll, we've been lucky this year, but the previous years, we've had multiple grass fires that fell on the holiday. Or whether it be ice and snow, uh, which we haven't been blessed with any snow, but I know four or five years ago, we, we were out working on holiday, bring the snow off.
Sure. Were they able to use that holiday in sixty days?
Some, I've been, if somebody decided to start seal coating here, we try not to let, we've kind of been verbal policy. You know, we don't let, they try not to let anybody off here at seal coating, but you get a rainstorm or, I mean, it's just, I think it needed to be in effect for the road bridge as well, but. But you get a rainstorm, or, I mean, it's just, I think it needed to be in effect for the road bridge as well, but.
Any other thoughts on that? I don't think it needs to be a county law. I think sixty days is sufficient for most departments, but these are, uh, kind of extremes, more extreme circumstances.
One really late.
So, for emergency?
Yeah, there's things that are, you know, there's a hundred and twenty.
So it'd be first responders and-
Part-time.
They don't happen all the time with them, I mean, it does happen. We're gonna wait at sixty for Road Bridge.
One, we're talking about one.
I want to clarify, we're making it one twenty if there's an emergency or permanently for Road and Bridge.
Just, uh, permanently, and then, but you don't have to get into nitpicking, or what was emergency and-
For holidays work?
Yes. Because we've already got it on the comp time, uh, for these fires that they've got until November the tenth for Roden Bridge to use their comp time. That brings up another subject on the hours, as far as the holiday hours. You know, the Road and Bridge work ten hours a day, you know? And when they're, say, if they're off, then they're, the way the hours, I'm thinking, Misty can, I don't know if I can explain it, but they're, we, they gain eight hours of holiday time. They get, if they're off, they're charged for ten.
So you're wanting-
How do we get that, or the, like, the Road and Bridge or the departments that work ten hours a day will receive ten hours of holiday time? That way, when they decide to take a day, they're taking ten hours.
Right. Versus the reason?
Even if their holiday equals what their regular hour, what their daily-
I believe it's in the policy where it says hour, if you change the wording from the set hour versus, and say workday, because then it would go to the workday. Like, for, um, Melody's office, you know, um, tax collect, that those who have that alter it, it will be their workday, not the eight hours.
So we need to take it to the work.
To, it would, it would need to be changed to workday.
And we had the same problem with the jail, because we work twelve hours.
Yeah.
But the problem you get into on the backside of that is now you're giving certain employees more hours, holiday time than-
Than the ones who work eight hours.
That's correct. So I don't, I don't know how you fight that fight, I don't.
Well, I thought they were, I thought it was a hundred and twenty hours period.
It is. Whatever sixteen days is.
So, you, I believe you're correct, we, can you pull up? Because that might be the wording in there, you might know versus-
Do you know where?
Um, I would just search a hundred and twenty hours, if you, if you're on, if, because I do not know just directly. I've organized myself into information. Because it shouldn't be in the-
Holiday, on the holiday time one?
I would think so.
Yeah, true.
A hot. Holidays, the list.
There you go, six nine.
And it says for the hours worked.
I doubt it.
To give an alternate pay off.
It's under a different time line.
Is it comp?
No, totally. Yeah, it's on home. Twitter pair, love me? Twitter pair, love me?
No, I, I'm doing a search. In my.
I think our pro rate's based off eight hours. I think our pro rate is eight hours in our department.
I think so.
And each holiday is worth eight hours.
Yeah, that's how you, I believe you're correct, on your season.
Back in the day, they were all eight hours.
The holiday, they only get eight hours.
And they approve.
They make it up.
The holidays, which is so many hours.
Yeah, powers.
On a holiday, so, well, how do you exceed that?
We don't. And I think for hours, we're based off eight.
Right, there was sixteen, nine-hour days.
Yeah.
Two thousand and eighteen annual.
Departments do different things.
Because, uh-
Over my-
I remember the arguments. Charlie.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I think it is.
Get ugly.
It's anywhere.
I think he may have been called to one of them.
The test of order, a referee. I know, I know this is what it was changed. That's where it was changed to this, within sixty days.
Sorry, we, we have no copies of that anywhere. I mean, I, I know it's in your email.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, it's frustrating that we can't update our stuff because we can't find the last.
Nine point one.
Nine point one on page fifty.
It's nine point-
I will go through and find those and send those to you, uh, because-
Because even the one on the website's not that one.
I know, that, that was to two different treasures, lots of-
Nine point one what?
Page fifty.
Page fifty, nine point one, I pulled it off the website, the current website.
Yeah, allegedly.
Road and Bridge is always a bit sixty.
Nine point one, you said?
Yeah.
Page fifty.
Page fifty. Pro rate of eight hours for holiday during the pay period, the holiday falls in.
What is that, about two hundred and twenty?
During holidays. So we've got it in two different places. That's where that change was made.
Okay, in the holiday.
That's where it shows the sixty day timeframe.
Okay.
On the online version.
Is it on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, under nine point two. So we have competing holiday.
Well, six point nine.
Yeah, granted, for eight hours to use in sixty days.
Okay.
So-
Remove six point nine. And leave in, I mean, tell her who we want to fix, nine point two.
Good. And nine point one. Because nine point one shows eight hours. And we, we don't have to rewrite it right here, but we can-
Need to know which direction, yeah, then, just to get clarification on how-
So what do you want to do, do you want to create, change it to a workday?
Yes, yes.
Workday. Now, I do have a question, because that leads to other questions. Um, okay, so you're wanting to do holidays as a workday. Does that mean that for your specified department, do you also want to do the vacation hours and sick time that way?
Well, you get forty hours of vacation or eighty hours of vacation only, so, except for, we don't, we get more than that, because-
We, I, we had to define that, we do stop at the eighty, we don't allow it to accrue to ninety-six, yeah.
We're gonna discuss that.
Yeah, that's another.
How, how would you keep up with that? Because, like, in the jail, from the treasurer's standpoint, in the jail, we have, it's an eighty-hour pay period, but we have several twelve-hour days and one eight-hour day. So if that holiday works on that eight-hour day, they're accruing the eight-hour holiday. If it falls on their twelve-hour day, then they're getting twelve hours.
I mean, that would be their-
And then there's some partial days, like, four-hour days for some.
Day, so it would be, I guess, what is scheduled for that day. Like, if you were gonna put them on schedule, it would be complicated.
Sounds like we need to change those areas to workday. What would be best, Andrew?
I just think that it's getting a little bit too, you know, you're getting too much in the mud on this. Like, it's eighty hours a year.
Uh-huh.
So it's eight, eight hour, like, as long as it's eighty hours.
Right.
I don't, I don't really, I mean, y'all are gonna discuss the vacation and stuff here in a minute, because we allocated at the first of the year, which I, I, I've never heard of doing this. It's always been allocated on your anniversary date, like, that's when you get it. You don't get vacation your first year, until you've been here a year. Um, so if you get it allocated at your anniversary date, you get allocated eighty hours. If you choose to use eighty hours in the first two months and your people let you, then that's on you. You're out if you don't use it. I just think-
So if you have eighty hours and you have a twelve-hour day-
For your vacation.
For your vacation.
Yeah.
So, uh, you're not gonna work as many days anyway. I mean, if you're working twelve days, how many days? Because it's three, four days that you're working.
Seven out of three.
Period, so, I mean, that's, because you're getting that other time off. Seven on, seven off, kind of, divided.
With, can you, for the same, if they do the eighty hours.
You know, I would think with Road Bridge, for ten hours a day. It's a, that's a week. Forty hours is a week.
It gets charged at ten-hour day.
You could be, you could be, but saying, okay, there's lots of holidays, and you're on Friday, yeah. Yeah, I mean, they don't get them, because they're on. I mean, that's, but they don't want to go back, they don't want to go to a eight-hour day. Sure. In five days a week, sure, they like what they're doing, so that's what, that's a trade-off. Exactly, it's very just- Lack it, and that's what you're doing for twenty days. Same with, do you want to be a sheriff or a deputy sheriff or whatever, jailer? There are trade-offs, this, this is just trade-offs. You can't, there's no way to figure this out to where everybody's happy with it. I mean, it doesn't work out that way, because you're gonna get over eighty hours.
Yes, you're gonna have some that are getting, would, then essentially get more than eighty hours vacation time, and then you're gonna have all of that. And I don't know that our new EAP system, I mean, there's a manual override, but we're gonna be able to go in and we're, we'll allocate it on the timeline that is set up in there. So it has to have a base, um, configuration to, to put it up. And if you put twelve, eight, it's gonna be-
It's gonna explode in your face.
It's gonna be a lot, like, I think as long as they get eighty hours, or if it's, what is it, after so many-
Yeah, you, you get three weeks, or whatever it is, then that's allocated out at that time.
I, I think the holiday thing is a whole different kind of topic on that.
Well, let's, let's revisit those later, let's look at it deeper.
Okay.
But I think also one, two, sorry, when we get fully into EAP and we see everything that it does, it might be even more-
Yeah.
Sure.
Then we'll just help more.
Okay, just for that. For the holiday, though, we are gonna use the words workday, not hours. For vacation, we're going to revisit at a later date. Sick time, we're reusing workday for eight.
Or same thing, I guess with the, running the same deal, I guess if you put at the end with the maximum of-
You accrue those right now.
Accumulate hours there as well.
Yeah, there, we do those monthly.
To a maximum amount of hours, so let's, let's revisit.
Okay, both of those, okay.
So we're moving to vacation and sick days.
Have to throw another wrench in. You know, where if there's lots of wrenches, you could throw it in.
You're gonna leave this.
I don't want to do that. A workday for me is twenty-four hours.
You, yeah.
They're different. We're, so if you're going to put workday, you want the policy to, to reflect the county.
Well, he's wrong. Twenty-four hours.
You want it to say, somewhere in the policy that, and it should be just one statement. It can read, I think, Misty and I have talked about this on the vacation side, but it, it could read for holiday, sick, bereavement, um, any type of paid time off or EMS, it's figured based on the EMS leave schedules and formulas that have already been created.
Could it say regular?
Yeah, we have that one.
Regular workday?
I'm sorry, what?
If we just put the words regular workday?
Yeah.
Because if one of my employees come in and say, "Well, it says workday here, and I've prorated everything based off of a twenty-eight and eight, and figured it all through a equation, to where it's fair across the board for the county and the employee, and you say a regular workday, then now, instead of getting seven holidays a year, now I get sixteen holidays a year." You don't want that for my budget. Now, if you guys don't like my budget anyway, you really don't like it if I say regular workday. So I think we need to clarify that. And that is something that we- With one statement, yeah.
We, we have that. Okay, that we're gonna discuss as well.
Okay. We don't like your budget? Or we don't like your pay schedule?
Probably.
I think your budget does pretty well, for what you are.
We'll come back next meeting on the other, on the zone.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. Um, while we're on vacation time, sort of, we're actually on holiday time, but we got into vacation time, let's discuss the current policy where you have employees, when you, when you have a new hire, they get all their vacation time upfront. Trey has had this issue at the jail, where you had someone that started in Novemberish and quit in January, January fifteenth, and they get two weeks vacation. I agree that that is not the default. Um, I like, personally, I like the idea of, uh, you're here for a year and then you get to-
That's it, yes.
And I do understand the reasoning that they had this before, because the current, um, accounting program, would it, didn't have those capabilities.
Sure.
But our new EAP system will have the capabilities, when you put the hired date, and then you put the, um, vacation accrual date or whatever in there, then it will then automatically on the, to my understanding, um, it will automatically then allocate those hours to that person after their hired date, a year later. You know, their anniversary date.
Right, and so that anniversary date, if someone was hired today on April first, it, it calculates that whole month, so it would be the following month, it would be May first, before they would acquire or accumulate those, those vacation hours.
I think that's all. Of the next year.
Of the next year, of the next year, yeah.
Right, not a few-
Not of that year.
Yeah, currently, they're getting all of this in their first year, like, Amy's even, she's like, "Dang, do you know how much time I already have?" And I was like, "Yep." She goes, "That's not how it happens anywhere else." I'm like, "Nope."
I agree with that, yeah. And of course, this would be any new hire from this point on, it's not backwards.
Right now, retro.
I mean, opposition to this idea, I don't-
So this would be no vacation times in the first year?
So, you hire somebody today, they don't, April first, they would not get any vacation time until May first of next year.
That's the way it was, whenever I went to work.
Yeah.
Back in eighty-one.
Right.
Now they're getting vacations. One of the players.
Yes, yes, I mean, honestly, the reason, I believe, that was not early in this policy, this policy was, this policy was put into place, like, even when they were allocated, because it was easier with the person putting it into the system, to do everything at one time at the first of the year, when you're putting all the new pay rates and everything, all it runs across. But to fully utilize our new EAP, it will do it. It's gonna allocate our seventy, it's gonna allocate our sick, it's gonna allocate our vacation. We just have to do them as man-hours behind the scene now, to put all of the correct information in there.
Okay, so we'll bring on that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not like, so much, yeah.
Do they get it all up front, or do they-
No, um, well, yeah, at- No, um, well, yeah, at third, their year, they would have their.
So on, on year two for them, would that revert back to the first of the year? Getting the lump sum at the first of the year? Once they get past the first year, then at the beginning of January.
It'll be your anniversary when you. Yeah, get your vacation out.
Yeah, I agree. And this is something that Trey has brought up a couple of times. Waiting to get lots of policy issues straightened out. Did you ever bring lunch?
I thought you'd get starving over here.
Okay, seven point one, medical insurance. So a couple of years ago, TAC said if an employee's spouse is employed somewhere else. And wherever their employer provides insurance for them. You have to, they can't be on our policy. They have since come back and said, no, we can't do that. We changed our policy to include that, so.
So it isn't legal.
Well, it's not legal, they did, it, it's not that it's not legal, uh, they can't enforce it. What the change we're looking at on seven point one from.
Can we enforce that?
We couldn't, yeah. And the second paragraph, spouse must be in, first enrolled in any available employer's foster group health plan. As primary coverage, once your spouse is enrolled in their health plan, they become eligible. Insurance plan as a secondary coverage, employees who request spouse's coverage must provide documentation. The spouse's employer does not provide insurance coverage or documentation, their spouse is currently involved in their insurance, employer's insurance plan. Talking with Mike about this one, um, basically changed that wording to as long as you meet all eligible. All requirements as. Set out by our provider, which is TAC.
But if TAC changes theirs, then we would change ours, if they go back to stricter, then we could go back to strict. So it would just be what TAC requires of us.
Or whatever provider that we have.
That's curious.
So what does this mean for, you know, like. So they've already got insurance on their spouse, you're saying that they have insurance with their company, they can't have the county's?
No, that's, that was the policy that TAC put out a couple of years ago, and they were saying, we're gonna cut your coverage if you allow that to happen. They have since come back and said, never mind.
But that would save, that's saving the county a lot of money, isn't it?
Does save some money, yes sir, cause you're requiring the spouse to be on. There, if it's available.
Especially if they're having real medical problems.
Oh, yes, and we require that they get a form right now and a letter from their employer that says whether they offer it or do not offer it. So currently.
So we're gonna stay with what we're doing?
Do you wanna do that, or do you wanna change it to as long as you meet the requirements of the insurance provider?
We're already having a difficult time giving the employees that we have. Those, you know, deciding whether or not we're gonna take the five percent or ten percent or seven, or whatever it is. And so the more people you add to it.
When we implemented this. More difficult. We had, we did have people that did remove their spouses or family, or wealth or spouse from our insurance. And the savings were about a hundred thousand dollars that year.
That's a lot. That could be the difference in actually being able to pay for that rap, that rise, it's gonna rise. And not paying for it, so I think if you weren't being an employee of Skerrit County, then get our insurance and work for us, and if you wanna work for somebody else. Use their insurance if they have, if they don't have it, I understand.
Keep getting the notes and requiring, okay.
I'm gonna have to go back and ask you later, cause I'm.
I'm making notes.
So I'm confused, does this mean my husband loses his insurance?
He's not being sure about anyone else.
Yeah, he still works for Canada Morgan. And he's on ours too.
It's basically the same.
But you have Canada Morgan insurance, right? So then, no, you're good. He has Canada Morgan, plus he's on here. The secondary.
Yeah, that's not a problem. That can't be the primary. But they have. And I would assume Canada Morgan gets a pretty good insurance.
Alright, uh, seven point four for retirement.
This is adding part-time, we already do take out retirement for part-time, we've been doing this for years. Just putting those words in there, that'd be what we do. I think it's helpful.
Any opposition to adding that? We can be paid.
Yes, and we have for children's.
Is that right?
There was a whole thing when, um, what's his name? Friendly Water Works dude. There was a whole deal, cause there was some actually. Yes, it is required, if they are regular part-time people, like it is required, if it's seasonal, it's not, right?
Yes, season only do not.
They go like thirty hours. Yeah, that.
Next thing we talked about. Was instead of vacation and sick time, this was brought up to Misty, why don't we go to PTO time instead of having vacation and sick time? Big issues there, having to pay out PTO time, we don't have to pay out sick time if somebody leaves. If somebody leaves, we do have to pay out PTO time, which can get. Expensive, so.
So y'all agree with the vacation and holiday? Believe it, the same.
Three, the second, under three, the second paragraph, remove sick leave application.
I've been here since twenty fifteen, and I didn't even know this was a thing, and whether your department uses one, then that is what you can require for your department. But as far as the treasurer's office, I do not have one to hand out to you that I'm aware of.
So it's an application, if you, if you're gonna go on sick leave, or if you're gonna go to a doctor's appointment. You have to turn an application in that says, I need to go to this doctor's appointment.
You can require it for your employees. Yeah, and you can require your guys in your, you know, every department can have their own policies, but as far as. My office policing it.
Good, great.
That'll be for. Department heads or the elected officials to do so.
Well, it helps whenever you show up and say, well, where's so-and-so?
Well, your policy already states that they've gotta call you thirty minutes prior to work time.
Well, we're talking about if they get a doctor's appointment.
Well, I mean.
Coming up down, two weeks down the line.
It helps us, you know, because that way we can, whatever order you schedule, we know how that many people are. This wouldn't be as.
Yeah, yes, this is not asking y'all to change what you're doing within your, your precincts or departments at all, it is just, I, I will not.
Are y'all okay removing it?
We're removing which one?
Eight four, eight point four, three, the second paragraph.
I mean, I understand if you're going to sleep out during your work, talk about F M L A and all that, you need to do that kind of thing.
Not on, right. Flu and COVID. That was in nine, wasn't it? So currently, there are two different policies for the end COVID, or coronavirus. You wanna go over this real quick?
Um, we need to add verbiage, well, first of all, do y'all want to put these three together? Where it is just one policy versus to separate it out. And then, um, we need to add words in, like you can get this one time annually. Um, versus kind of an open-ended, um, which is how I guess some people can interpret it right now. And if we want to use verbiage back to the work week versus, you know, the eighty hours.
Well, I don't think we need the COVID thing in there anymore, personally.
I, well, okay, there are some workers comp issues, like, cause EMS and sheriff fall under certain things. And, um, so it gets kind of tricky when we. I'm not necessarily trying to take it out, um, but it benefits us with leaving it in.
The doctors are still diagnosing.
There was a conversation, I don't think. Changing it from coronavirus to another type of this, all encompassing of that type of.
There is a word for.
Is it communicable disease?
I think so, yes, it's what is in the, um, workers comp and unemployment stuff is considered, but.
There was, there was a specific term that was. Were your thoughts there, if you want to. Combine them, first of all. Or you wanna eliminate, I mean, because there are certain things that are really required to allow leave for on. Certain things, no, sir.
Just put them together, okay. And then do we wanna use work week versus an annually?
Annually, yes, you're, we won't believe it in there because of the financial strength that calls on our employees. Is that what we're?
That is why it's in there, yes sir.
Yes, if you have somebody that comes in sick and spreads it. You know, this allows them to go ahead and.
So that, that could be lots of.
Yeah, it could, but more specifically, that type of illness that.
I mean, any virus is spread, I'm sure.
There's a specific term, I'm gonna find that term, yeah, I'm gonna find that term and I will. If y'all are okay with it, I'll change it to that term that.
Our experience, the guys that have been at the. You're sick two days or three days, and then they call you on the weekends, hey, what's the doctor, and I tested positive for coronavirus. They've already been working three days, so.
Yeah, it's not in here is harmful or, or keeping you from working is, I mean, I. Probably need to go back to our natural Indian system. Everything that they said wasn't true, the shot will keep you from getting it, the distancing will keep you from spreading it. Wear the mask. Oh, my goodness.
So you're saying, can I ask a question, or so you're saying there's no, is there, there's a reason why? All that can't just fall under sick leave, the, the flu can't, the coronavirus can't, what, is there, is that, you're saying that you can't do that?
I mean, it could, but we put the flu policy in, uh, six years ago to basically, so that if you're sick. With the flu, when you have a doctor's note, you don't come and spread it to everybody else, but you have a separate amount of sick time. It's, it's not calculated against your sick time, it's separate flu time. So that you can.
Encourage them to.
Yeah. To not come to work, cause you have people that are, I'm out, I'm out of sick time, they use a sick day every month. And as soon as they get it, they, they use it. And so this is a separate thing to encourage them to stay home instead of bringing that to.
And this is a pretty common policy now within personnel policies across just the text, I mean, everywhere fairly, but.
What would they need?
Right, and that's why we want to make it. Two weeks or one? Now, there's a summer flu. So what you're suggesting is to use the coronavirus slash flu policy for one week, one year. Per year.
Annually. That's the most amount of times you can use it in a year.
In once.
Yeah, we've had people get. Supposedly get it multiple times in one year, and they're always out, I mean. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, I don't know, but it seems to be a lot.
Cause if you can combine them together, is it two weeks or one?
That's another question.
Two weeks or one week? One week for flu, one week for any other? Type of.
Probably, probably one week period if we're gonna do it.
I mean, you can try it and have, see how expensive it gets.
Um, I don't have hard information, um, but it, we had. Oh, no, I can't, I'm like, um. This year, we've had, I think. According to the personal reports, I think we've had ninety-one hours total for COVID use, I believe, roughly around that. So a little over one person's work week.
You know, it's shocking that they know that part of the policy, that you ask them about every damn things about the policy. I, I didn't know that.
Well, something else about the policy that. Remember is that if you don't use any sick time at all, you get three additional vacation days.
Really did.
And we have a couple of people who, I mean, don't use any sick and have, you know, gotten that, so.
Well, the few are always gonna gain the system. And ruin it for everybody else, so.
So y'all good with those changes? Week annually and work week instead of hours. Alright, retirement, health insurance policy, thirteen point eight. So in. May of twenty twenty-one, uh, opted in May of twenty twenty-one, we went to eight year.
Five year best.
We had.
Yeah, yes, so we didn't.
I mean, we went to eight years, we, we were at five. You know, we were at, at five and eight, and, or I'm sorry, we were at five and five. And we've gone to five and eight. vested at five and eight years for. Health insurance.
So we did, uh, five years vested for whatever the judge, uh, judge wanted to do. We were at eight, so it's eight, eight and five is what you're saying, so then we went to five with the vested and eight with the.
And you cannot change the vested. You cannot, right, you can't reverse it, right. But this, the, this one you can. This is where you can, okay, right. Right, um, we just changed that four years ago. Um, I don't know why we would change it so quickly after, but whatever y'all thought, I'm interested in hearing.
Um, I think that's the same. I mean, unless it becomes a burden, I think that's a good benefit.
Well, looks like we'll think five. Well, it may feel a little bit terrible anyway or make it more expensive, probably makes it more expensive, doesn't it? If we go from eight to five.
I, I mean, depends, I mean, that's an open ended question because you have to look at what your workforce age is and all that kind of stuff. I mean, is it, if you have someone who hires on, um, at an older age, you know, is it, I guess, i- i- do you think it's beneficial to have them, you know, to try to work that eight years to, you know, if that's a possibility for them to obtain the health insurance? Um, so there's a lot of different, um, i- i- it's gonna be, depends on what you consider is a burden, I guess, or not, honestly.
We, we've talked.
Yes, sir.
They may not pay to keep county insurance out of their own pocket. We don't really give them that much extra.
No, and, yeah.
To keep that policy, but it's a, from everything that I understand, that policy is a lot better policy than what you can go out and to the insurance. Uh, bring none and buy it. And so it's, I think it's a great benefit for somebody that doesn't get to work or isn't able to work for eight years. I know there's been that and that's one of the reasons that the other guy, the other was changed because you have someone that's not doing well, that's really sick and they want to continue to work. Though they shouldn't be working to get the eight, eight years in. I, I think that both of them should be five and five.
So that's my fault. Well, if you go to five and five, does this mean that you're gonna have to order the ones that.
Yeah, it would be.
You're gonna have to go back.
Yeah, it would be, anybody new.
We'll start with anybody that's going to retire after today.
I don't remember the reason we, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it won't, yes. I, like, I don't know, I think Dan said this, um, with T C or, I do think, side note, um, that whatever we go to, we can't keep flopping back and forth. We need to get a number and we need to stick with the number. T C D R S, we are locked in and we can never change again, um, unless they change laws and stuff. So, um, I, I do think that we cannot flop back and forth.
I don't understand why we went to the eight.
I don't mind.
And I know why we went to the five, on their best plan, I remember that.
But it's, the eight's always been eight since I've been here.
No, we changed it May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, because Mike came to court that day.
Yeah, we changed it to eight on that.
So we.
Sure, wow, we did.
So if you change it to five, maybe that starts basically today, any, any new employees, yeah.
And, and what that means that, I mean, they can't just work five years and then retire, they have to meet C D R S requirements. It's gonna have to be, they have to reach age, um, we do require them to be on Medicare, um, you know. There are requirements for that.
So just to be clear, are we saying that anyone that were to retire after today that had less than eight years would not be able to purchase?
If you were hired under the eight, you're staying under the eight.
You're staying under the eight.
Correct.
Uh, that's up to y'all, I, I mean, we could, I, I, I don't honestly know how many that would meet requirement right now, there might be. High side four that might be able to do that, but, um.
And if I remember right, Mike was saying you can't do.
Yeah, you can't go back.
Right.
So.
So it'd be any, any hires.
Yeah, so the current ones are at the eight.
Right.
But, oh, I got that, there was.
Unless you were hired before it went to the eight.
Yes.
Like I was hired when it was still a five.
Me too.
So anybody hired after that, whatever day you said, May of twenty twenty-one, the ones people there are eight, the ones before. That's why you can't keep flip flopping.
Flip flopping, backwards and forwards, and it is.
Well, didn't you say, if we, let's say we go from eight to five, that we change, change it to the year.
No, T C D R S, you cannot change. This one, we shouldn't keep switching it and changing it and we should get to one and stick with it, but that is an in-house policy versus a T C D R S policy.
T C, that's the.
Yes, without your vested.
If we go to five today for new hires, anybody that was hired before, what would you say would change the?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, anybody that was hired, try to take that.
First of five, yeah, so it's no benef, it's no benefit for anyone that's actually here.
Four years span.
Four years, man.
Four years spanning people that are eight years.
Man, I, I agree with you, Ben, I think we live at the eight. I thought we could benefit some of these folks that are here.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I, I'm just. I'd be for the eight, just leave it alone.
That's the way it is, so leave it.
Yeah, I want to benefit those that are capable. We have.
Thirteen point eight, no action.
All right, uh, travel policy, uh, it's also gonna go into purchasing policy, I believe, as well. Um, so we need to discuss, uh, policy using county vehicles that are assigned to you. Um, this came up recently, someone asked to have this discussed. Main purpose, if the main purpose of your trip is personal and your county business is secondary, should you be allowed to get per diem or travel funds if that's your side trip? And it's not your main business and you have a county vehicle, but you choose, or you're out of town in a personal capacity, but do county business? Is that clear, Snug?
Yeah, for myself, what I have done, if I'm taking my personal vehicle because I've got personal things to do, is I'm, I'm going, and that's my policy, and so, you know, maybe we need to have a policy.
We don't have a policy, that's why this is on there, I, I am not the one who has to put it on here, though. Because my purchase of policy is gonna be completely revamped, so.
So I go, I, I may go five or six times before I ever charge for my vehicle if I've got personal things to do. Uh, if, if I'm going up there to, I mean, if I'm just going to buy John Deere house and picking up something for the guys or buy Love it Greater Blade. Now, if I'm going up there and spending a lot of time, like I did in December, where I was trying to find the things that my guys needed, and I'm spending, you know, five or six hours looking through, because every time you, it's like anywhere you go, and you, even the big box stores, they don't have what you need half the time. I mean, you gotta go to several different ones and do the research, besides the pricing, I mean, if you're buying for the county, you want to get the lowest price. Then you can get it, so I'm spending a lot of time, that's one thing, but if I'm just dropping, going by, well, it's like Thursday, I'll be going by and picking up the litters from Love it Greater Blade, but I've also got a meeting up there, which is for Spartan. And, but I won't charge for the mileage on something like that. I think it's, I think it's gonna have to either be polit, you know, some type of policy there, or you're gonna have to say, okay, I, I did one percent for county and I did ninety, nine percent for me. Then I'm, I'm not gonna charge the county, or if I did fifty percent, I'm not gonna charge the county. I may be ever two or three times, I might charge county to do it, but then that comes into regulating our own morals or ethics or whatever. I don't think you can charge it every time just because you're going by, picking up a filter or picking up the litters or whatever, I would like what I'm doing.
Like, you know, if I pass, you know, the smell, he picked up those cabinets, I didn't charge for it, I mean, we could have, but. If I go to Love it, the doctor's appointment, uh, that's my priority goal, but it never fails, the guy that, hey, why you up there, pick this up? And if it's a lot, then I'm just gonna take county pickup, uh.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need to be going up there every trip. When we have, when we have the county pickup provided for, we're paying for those county pickups out of our paycheck, uh, we need to use them.
Yeah, there you go.
We're not gonna sound like they did.
I've had one before this where I took my personal pickup, I've got one on here. My personal pickup didn't get fixed, oh, county pickup didn't get fixed, okay? I took my personal pickup, the pickup, well, last time it's for me and personally for. So, I mean.
I think what it's boiling down to is what's the main purpose for the trip? Is the main purpose for the trip personal and county business is an aside? Or is the main, the main purpose county and personal is an aside? That's, I think that's the main gist behind what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
You know, are we going up there for a meeting or a doctor's appointment or to meet somebody for lunch or whatever it is? And, oh, by the way, I'm up here and I'm gonna pick up. I was at school last week, uh, um, and I picked up some signs. I brought them back, I'm, you know, I'm not using any county money for that trip at all. So I'm not charging per diem on that, or I'm not charging.
You gotta get back to Snyder anyway.
I gotta get back to Snyder anyway, so, um, that's. So what, what do y'all want to do on this? You want a policy?
Like, there needs to be one. If you're going up there just to pick up something for the county, coming back and your personal vehicle, then you should.
I agree with you, Ben.
If you're going up there predominantly for.
If you're going up, I mean, if you have a county vehicle going and going up there, I mean, not just for county business, you shouldn't be.
No, well, if it's broken down.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
That's the reason you'd charge to use your vehicle, but if it's not broken.
A current question on that about the county vehicle, so I have somebody who is going on conference next week, next weekend, I think. Um, his county vehicle, I wouldn't, I recommend him driving out of town in it, locally around here, yes. But, I mean, we know, like, that, that pickup, this, it's, I wouldn't trust it, I wouldn't drive it, I would just not charge myself if it were me, but. He's going, he's signed up and he's going to a conference that's, and it's a, I can't remember the name of the place now, but it's, it's like six hours away.
Probably quit keeping the vehicle.
Is it in Grapevine this year?
Or Frisco, maybe.
I don't know, it's the count, it's the technology one, but, I mean, I wouldn't recommend.
I, I won't take mine. Mine's a two thousand nine, I've already had trouble with it, transmission and the engine, and now it's still, I, it's not trustworthy. So I'm going to take my vehicle when I go to Austin or.
Okay, so in the policy, it does, that is the one thing we do have in there, is if they go to a conference and they have a county vehicle assigned, they have to use their county vehicle or they don't get reimbursed mileage, um, so.
Let's buy a new pickup then. Amen, either way.
They're gonna be a trace, and they're gonna, you don't buy a new, they're gonna bring it in. But that, that is in the policy. Now, I don't know if y'all want to buy a new car or him to go to a deal, but in the event that the vehicle would not make it, then would, and this is gonna be up to y'all, how y'all wanna state this, would a statement suffice saying that, you know, like, we all know how that truck was, it's been passed around to three of my departments because of the, how it, you know, it's just not a reliable source. Jeremy usually because it works well for just your locally.
Right.
That vehicle was traded in or set, given to another department, so it was replaced with another vehicle, so I don't, why don't we keep shuffling these vehicles down the line when, if they're not good enough for me, why am I gonna?
Actually, the library had it and they gave it, and the library did not replace the vehicle. They just went to no vehicle.
Yeah.
It's the same, but it originally was a commissioner pickup. And it wasn't, if it wasn't good enough for that commissioner, then we don't need to be handing it to another department, uh, for them to just spend money on it, because that's costing the county.
That was a court decision, but I don't think just court decision.
You know, driving locally is one thing. And, and if it is being repaired all the time, I agree with you completely. If it's not being repaired all the time, I mean, mine's not being repaired all the time, but I don't trust it to Austin. I don't trust it to Frisco for work Dallas, I'm, I ain't done it. Now, if we need that policy that you either get reimbursed or you use your county pickup in, I, I'll, I'll put in the budget for a new one, that's fine.
I would, I would think, um, right, Jason, we do, we do have some vehicles that aren't good for in town. That aren't being repaired, travel worthy. Um, so I wouldn't be opposed to, in those situations, that we pay travel or mileage for those folks that have those untrustworthy vehicles.
I, I agree.
No, that's a problem, that, but who's gonna make the decision as to where it is, not transport it, that's other issue.
That's where we have our list of vehicles and we know which ones are not, are not, you know.
Shouldn't all of that department head or electric division. That's where you gotta trust your electric divisional department head to know what they're doing.
Or appointing.
Or appointing, sorry.
And at that point, I mean, you could eventually just simply have a statement in front of the department heads, I do not feel safe driving this vehicle, I mean, I'm not gonna get stuck in the middle of the road in between here and Austin. I will, you know.
Certainly not in Austin.
I don't even go to Austin for reasons of it. But there's no policy on it, so, I mean, the policy that is on there states what I just told y'all. So we just need clarification on, on, on this, mileage reimbursement and travel wellness mileage, safe.
Okay, we can, e- everybody agree with creating wording for that?
Sure.
Okay.
As an aside on that, though, the new system, um, in fixed assets, there is a section in there that has a maintenance, um, to track maintenance on the vehicles. Now, y'all will have access to your own assets that you can fit it in there, because I'm not doing it. But y'all, you would then have access to see your assets assigned to your department and then you could go in or you could have your chief deputy or whoever it might be going in and putting the date, oil change, whatever it is, to track the maintenance. Cause I don't know, other than Jason, I'm not sure how, who all tracks their maintenance on there.
Will the invoices correlate to that, though? I mean, won't the invoices, like, if I get tires someplace, will those tires go into that, will that invoice be tied to it?
It can, it can scan and go to there.
But you won't be scanning it to that.
You will scan it there.
But when you process the invoice, the system won't scan it.
Well, I don't know, it might, I don't know, if we put an asset number that tied it.
They're still.
It might.
Okay.
Yeah.
Our fixed asset program currently was not being utilized the way, like, it wasn't, they did not utilize it. Now, we will be fully utilizing it and that will include pictures of all the assets in there, um, verifying, hands on, verifying, no, no trace, no.
How many more deputies are you gonna need?
That's why y'all are gonna. So y'all are gonna do it.
We're y'all, we're the deputies. They're gonna assign that to your asset, and then assign to that maintenance, that'll be. Just pictures.
Okay, wait, I go fast. When we turn in invoices, I'm gonna prepare one, you scan them, correct?
No, y'all will.
No? Okay, what do you do?
Currently, we don't scan them right now. We will, when we go to the new, when we get fully going into our new system, we are gonna start scanning everything from twenty twenty-five we've already paid. We will be scanning every one of those into the vendor record that it goes into, and that will create a file. So when y'all have access, and you see your department, or as commissioners, you see the, the, you'll have a view only version to all departments as the court, then you will be able to pull up a payable and be like, okay, what is this on? And then you can pull up that copy of that invoice, invoice, and see what it was, who signed off on it, what they, you know, all of that information. Currently, we don't scan in anything. We are going, we have the capability right now, but we didn't wanna enter that in, and keep getting fully into ten.
But, new system, you won't be scanning.
We will scan what we currently have, and y'all will scan your new stuff.
That's fine, but my question is.
But it will be scanned, because we are, essentially, our goal will be to be paperless. A very little paper is possible. I mean, it might not be able to fully go that way yet, but, that, our goal is by twenty twenty-six to be fully integrated into our new system, and with, it's, everything scanned. And there's a way, like, Jason does it already, and I think, and Dan does it already, on the invoices of coding them, and initially, no one in skin, and sending them to us already.
I haven't done a whole lot, because I have to put that, are we gonna have to put that statement on it? This is compared to the original, this is, this, this is the original version, signed for.
Um, I don't know, I will talk to them, and as we're, we're supposed to move it again next week, I'll talk to them to verify if it has to be any kind of statement in there. I don't think so, because this is our data and it's our information.
We used to have to just scan it in an email, you used to have to put that statement.
Yeah, I don't think we have to.
That's easy, that's why I stopped it, we'll get you set up.
Yeah, I mean, it's our data, it's ours.
You just hit that button, scan two. Precinct, three commissioners, and hit scan, and send it right to a file. Grab that file on your computer, open it, you can sign it, cover it.
I can learn if anybody can. Okay, eight point six civil leave.
Oh, we're still. Yes, we still are.
No, I'm laughing, you said if you can learn, then anybody can. We're gonna have a rough go over there.
All right, eight point six civil leave, uh, looking at, uh, voting. Leave, Mike used the term ability to exercise your franchise, your legal ability to vote. Uh, this would be seasonal amount, but not in four hours if we did this time off rate during local state or federal elections in which they are eligible to vote. So the discussion was, do we wanna allow our employees time to go vote? Uh, keeping in mind that some of our employees live in other counties, and they would need additional time to be able to go and vote. Up to a half a day.
Do y'all, they are considering making this a national holiday, federal holiday, so.
Oh, wow.
To a lot of people too, but it's being presented to congresses and stuff, and watching to be taken.
So we wanna wait on that and see what happens federally?
Yes, everyone wants to go back to a single day?
Yes.
No, or?
No paper, I mean, no.
Paper ballots on.
And voter ID.
Yes.
Paper ballots on. I love it.
Melody does, no, Melody doesn't carry on our list.
Get the chat.
But all that money, we just put on machines. And you can't use it. We gotta get reimbursed.
At least we weren't like, love it. They bought one machine and had to have another.
So we're gonna hold off on that one. My understanding, see what happens federally.
Let's do it.
All right, Ms. Do you have a bunch of forms?
Um, well, I have the EMS vacation holiday, and, and we do his annually, because he had work shifts, and it's really complicated to, for him to get his people off and schedule them, so his is accrued annually, so, oh, sugar. Um, sorry, God. Just, sorry.
For saying no sugar.
Well, it meant other things. If your heart's wrong, heart's wrong. This is just to add this into policy, it's very simple, and I can y'all wanna look at that one, the wording has, minimum, just says that we will follow that to let them recruit annually.
You've seen this, right?
He wrote it. No, I just went on it.
I don't.
This is for EMS?
It is for EMS.
I don't know, I sent you several.
It's a little, little tiny one that's the.
I sent you, like, three recommended, three or four recommended?
Yeah, I used to like those words.
Okay.
While she's gonna, while we're looking at these, I'll probably look at it. She's gonna go over a bunch of forms here in just a minute, and on our website, these are all gonna be employee forms. So on our website is a staff login that we can get hooked up and turned on, so all of the department heads and elected officials can go down to the bottom of our website, hit staff login, and be able to log in, and go to these forms. They won't be on the web page, it'll be behind the scenes, behind the curtain, after all this.
Okay, this is a workers' comp type form, we have a lot of workers' comp claims, I shouldn't say a lot, I shouldn't say that, and we have some. And when they ask me a bunch of questions, I don't have the answers to, I was up there to witness the accident, I, you know, so this is kinda, this will be a form that will go over, like, so the employee itself can say this, because they asked me, like, where was the injury at, you know, upper body and all this kind, they asked me a whole bunch of questions. This will just be for department heads and elected officials, if there is gonna be a workers' comp claim for you and the employee to fill out, so I have those answers when I go in and do the claim myself.
Now, this is what was sent to us by Amanda, some week or two ago?
Um.
That, is it the same form?
I don't think so, that's probably a different form, because I have online, forms, 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 it's document, document, document.
Okay.
And this is just for y'all to know the forms that I am going to use in my office, since y'all are going to pull the policies, I'm gonna kinda follow, so y'all are aware. This is a overpayment and underpayment form, we are human, we make mistakes. So, this is doc, this will document, if there is any corrections to, um, a paycheck, we'll have documents and say, hey, we did make this mistake, or this was made, and so, sorry, Jason, I guess I should have. So, which one it was gonna be?
And these are gonna be them.
Yes, yes. And the payroll change form templates, and I know y'all have seen that one, if there is any kind of discrepancy on whether you have holiday time, vacation time, or sick time, and we are not changing those anymore. And I think that is the liability to us, so we will call the employee or the department head, and then, and we'll sign the employee's lines to tell them that change to happen, because I shouldn't, or we shouldn't go into the timesheet and just make a correction, and, you know. This is an awesome little F, this was Mary's statement that I got from Savannah, which is just a beautiful form. Um, so, because we have, I mean, there's write-ups that happen, you know, and something, this is just a template, and kind of just a check and little comments, so there is documentation, if there is any issues going on, we have that. I don't think that's okay.
Is this the deposit, different banking deposit change, or you're coming through that?
That one is for, like, if there is issues with the holiday time, vacation time, or leave time on the timesheets, and instead of us just changing it.
That's the form they had to sign.
Yeah, yes. And, we don't have an actual formal agreements form, and, and it is, I think it's federal that we allow for grievances, so, I need a form, I like forms, I really like forms there.
As I, as I was saying, we will have a staff login.
Yes, so, and these will all be, well, and so, I, you could utilize them, so then we're all on the same page as to everyone's kind of using the same thing. Employee complaint form, and they are allowed to have opinions, so, I figured it would be beneficial if they had a form where they could.
Unapproved for that one.
Yes, I'm so sorry. Oh, like, they are, but that is it, the other ones are nothing, so it wasn't so bad.
It's it, yeah.
Do, uh, do you have all those saved?
I do, yes, and I will for PDF, yes, sir. I think I have a couple that, I can print them so they can be the law online.
Where's the one that you had that was for Ms. B?
Do you actually want us to print these off and take them to our guy?
Angela just had a really good point, um, all of the department head selected officials, like, it could be, like, in their portal for the new system, so, yeah. You'll have them right there when you log in.
There's places for hyperlinks to go to, all that stuff, things like that.
Are you wanting us to use these forms, not our?
I, no, these are available, if you already have forms, I just kind of want it to be, if it can be a universal thing, that would be great. But I know that you have really good forms also, so, it's some offices, departments, whatever, don't have anything. So, this is kind of, these are available, and this is what I'm going to send out and request use, if there's a question. Yes.
Suggestion, not record.
Yes.
Y'all approving all of those forms?
What about the one that you had, you said something about the ones that we've used for, they're gonna take time off?
I have this, well, we don't really have a title form, I found this one. Um, and this one, it's, it needs, um.
Work.
Um, yeah, because it has, well, I guess they can still go to vote on it, um. But that one needed some work, so I didn't know how. I mean, I can use that one, it's just a couple of things I can work on, if that's, if you want to require that, I can, I can put it in there.
You know better than to complain to brain.
Well, I don't know if it was for, like, the officials to make complaints.
And the difference in the complaint and grievances?
Um, agreements is usually, like, where you want me to actually go talk to the, or to the agreements committee. And, like, when we have HR investigations and all that kind of stuff, I have to bring it, like, I have to tell, and then we have the former committee. That's usually what agreements, a complaint will be more directly probably to the department head, like, hey, this employee is having this issue with maybe X employee or whatever, um, before it becomes a, a major thing.
Before it becomes a grievance.
Yes, and then, it becomes more than it is.
Okay, did you, did the employee have the quarter form?
I'm fixing to do that one.
That's also a quick killing tree.
Paperless.
Paperless, I know, but I've killed so many trees.
This is a positive.
I have all kinds of bets.
I am, thank you.
Sugar and dart.
I think that morale is always a good thing to boost, I made a form, and, and we'll kind of have a, like, a talk to the, like, a rotating committee for doing an employee, we can do month, quarter, um, just so our outstanding employees can get recognized from Commissioners Court, so.
Different from the health thing?
Yes.
And the research shows that this actually does boost morale?
It does, people are proud of their achievements.
Okay.
Um, and they'll get, like, I think we talked about a, what was it, a day off, and well, they'll get time, not necessarily, I mean, they'll have to talk to their department head, but they'll get, like, a day off, um.
I mean, so people are just naturally talented and able to go above the beyond, so, hopefully, that's what I'm looking at, is you have supervisors that can see it in those that don't have that talent, and are doing a good job, and, and they're a little slower, they're, they're not quite as inquisitive, they're a little quieter, and then they never are.
Put their head down to get their job done.
Yeah, and so that's, if we're bad, I mean, that's like merit raises, you're my friend, I give you one.
Well, then that's, that's why it's not.
It's a committee, that is, it's not gonna, the department head will not vote on who gets, like, you know, like, they can submit, but it will be the committee, so then it is kind of more of a
Good.
unbiased state, you know.
So is there a way of, like, you wanna nominate somebody, is there gonna be, like, a place that you can nominate?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be this nomination form?
It's a form.
And it can be anybody.
So it's one employee that will count each quarter?
Yes, yes, yeah, like, it'll, they'll, maybe it'll be.
That's gonna be in that little portal thing.
Everything is a portal.
Only for you. But yes, the certificate, yes, you can give a certificate, employee of the month certificate, recognizing Commissioners Court, either monthly or quarterly, however you want.
We won't say what kind of special you are.
And then we'll post that, and then we'll post that on our website and our Facebook page, yeah. It's just, it's show appreciation for our employees.
I see nothing wrong with that, if it's that appropriate. It would immediately certainly be better, but, yeah.
So, uh, recommendation was five on the committee, what were you gonna say?
Um, the, um, CDL stuff, do you wanna go over that, or?
Go ahead.
The possible CDL?
Yeah, let's finish this up real quick.
Okay, anyway.
So, committee of five, um. One being a tiebreaker, and, you know, if there was a tie, and I think one commissioner should be on it every time, rotating, and then whoever else, I mean, department heads or employees and.
The judge is gonna be on it, or is that rotating as well?
I can stay on it, I don't, I don't mind.
I mean, Commissioners Court members or commissioners, you're saying commissioners?
Well, I, I could be on it full-time, or, or rotate with y'all, either way, however y'all decide to do it.
I think that you have a better pulse myself, uh, on, on everyone, better than what we did. We're out on the road a lot, stuff, you're always here.
In other words, you don't do anything.
You get on my road, no.
It'd be just to go somewhere.
Yeah.
All right, so y'all okay with that? Okay, uh, monthly or quarterly?
Quarterly, four times a year, monthly, twelve.
Two hundred employees, that's not bad.
Well, that's, that's, where are you gonna start?
What do you mean, where are you gonna start?
Well, I mean, you got two hundred employees.
Anybody that works for Skir County can nominate somebody, so we might get fifty nominations first month, second month, however, you know.
Yeah, I would think so.
All right. Okay, and then, we'll vote on all of this at the end.
Okay.
Of all of them.
Okay, um, I've had a couple of questions regarding CDL and the classes, and if we can, um. Words are not my best thing, um, how, how to retain them longer if we put them to the CDL course? Um, I will say that I have spoken at length with Mike, and, um, he is worried about, he has some concerns. So, um. Is that something that y'all are, I guess, really kind of wanting to look into, um? Not necessarily.
Lunchtime.
It is lunchtime. Hey, well, that doesn't help me at all, Sean, um, a type of, not necessarily, I don't wanna use the word contract, but, that will require, um. Agreements, um.
Yeah, so, it was, how do we ensure that it's, it's getting paid back?
Yes.
Um, what is the value for us if we're getting this program through an interlocal agreement? What, what, what value do we put on that? Um, these are all my questions, and then, who's going to maintain that program, because Jersey's office would not be able to do that? Who's gonna ensure that, you know, if we hire? Who's gonna ensure that, you know, if we hired somebody and they didn't stay, if we had an agreed, a written agreement with them, which, at that point, if you haven't written an agreement with them, Mike brought up the fact that once it becomes, once you do that, that's been tried before, uh, I think when the hospital had, uh, rotation nurses and then Mississauga, um, they tried to put them into two-year contract, you stay for this long, they'd leave after a year, well, you owe us this much money because you trained us, we trained you, um, and then, uh, they'd have to sue them through, uh, JP Court to get that money back. And then, what are the odds that you're actually gonna get the money back that you're on your way to make sure?
So you can't garnish wages, you can't.
Right, and you can't.
You're just going through and putting another piece of the puzzle out there, you can't do anything with.
Yeah, I have, I have one, got C D L a few months later.
Yeah.
Make more money.
Yeah.
Because they use the CDL. Oh, is he, sacravating, but I just don't, I mean, if it's not enforceable, and you don't have a way to enforce that.
It's really much just on that.
Because it kind of stakes them out to sue them, you can get a judgment against them, but that judgment's not worth paying to grow them.
It's just like small business, you go to court and tell them that, you know, they didn't pay me, and so, what are you gonna do? So you can pay the county clerk's office, right, and get a judgment against them, and if you keep that judgment up, possibly whenever they die or sell something, you might get it. Didn't worth it, I've done it, done it, don't work.
Unless they don't have an IRS lien, or state tax lien, or child support lien, the Trumpshire lien.
Exactly, so, yeah, it's just not worth it.
I don't see any way to force it, I would.
I would too, oh my goodness.
I don't see any way to, I don't either.
Anybody else have thoughts?
I don't see any way to, I've already talked about it, just, yeah, even enforce it, so.
Do you have anything else?
No. I'm excited too.
Certified revenues? I think we need to vote on policy changes, uh, anybody want to make the motion to? I'll make the motion to, uh, and actually changes that we discussed. Now, certified revenue, for EMS.
Okay, so we have the revenue, that one's fifty dollars.
Yeah. Fifty dollars.
Or the, the bid of the office chairs from Sean, that Sean bought, turning the bid for fifty dollars to sale of assets. Um, then, which one are you doing next, airport?
EMS or airport you want?
Do, uh, airport, fifty thousand, this is from, uh, Affuel, this is what we do, does it every so often, and this is just, also, we'd like to, uh, see about, I don't know if we might have to put it on the agenda the next time to put, place it in Texas class, airport for his runway stuff. EMS, sale of assets, uh, uh, bid on the two thousand seven Chevy Tahoe that Shane Carey won for two thousand five hundred and one dollars into his EMS sale of assets.
Okay, um, non-departmental?
Non-departmental is, hold on, that is the, um, my placement, uh, City Snyder, third of the placer AI software, receiving those funds back and then to miscellaneous revenue of eighty-four hundred dollars, and there would be a budget amendment placing that into the four oh nine forty-five hundred maintenance repair miscellaneous, which is the line we paid it up. Precinct one, um, placing, it was sold, uh, assets, not our iron and metal, or I guess, this extra metal and stuff, five hundred and fifty-two oh five, um, I don't know if I have a budget amendment for this one, but yes, I do, so there's budget amendment with this one too, place that into this one.
Yeah, it's a mic to make sure it's certified, you're in the middle of it.
All in favor? Uh, line item transfer, parks, precinct two, fifty-two, oh, got it, I know what it is.
Court with seven purchasing policy.
Do what?
Uh, we, that's right, purchasing policy, we're not gonna make any changes other than.
No, we were just talking about the discussion for it, and then I will type up stuff to put in there for that on the purchasing policy, because I don't have my purchasing policy ready yet, but I needed to know a direction to go in. Um, lease rental, this is, uh, road and bridge precinct two, lease rental, it's, um, there will be a line on transfer, and I don't know if it's on this one, I think it is, uh, placing the funds, oh, this is it, from the parks to, my, I'm hungry, my stomach's running, my brain is not working, um, from the parks to the precinct two, lease, sort of capital outlay fifty thousand to parks, lease run.
It's a skid steer.
For the skid steer.
It's the purchasing act.
Yes.
And then commissioners' court capital outlay from precinct three, road material for forty thousand three oh five twelve, purchasing the pickup that he had to purchase to replace the one he had, those are the line on transfers.
What happened there? Oh, what happened there?
I had, I gave precinct three, and I went.
Traded in a two thousand and nine.
Yeah, the repair bill was more than the pickup was worth, so I traded it in, I gave the pickup I got from the sheriff's office to precinct three to replace the one I traded in.
Oh, your, your pickup, that, your commissioners' court pickup?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, you said giving it precinct two, that's ruining, because.
Anyway, you're in precinct three.
Okay, you're in precinct three. You did.
I did.
But anyway, he's hungry. Okay, and which is this?
Those amendments, there is the one for the eighty-four hundred dollars that, um, placing it into four oh nine maintenance repair miscellaneous, for us not, that City Snyder for the AI, placer AI, um, and then the other one is road and bridge, the certified revenue, the five fifty-two oh five, placing it into maintenance repair line.
Play. All in favor? And council payable?
Council payable is, uh, right now, one million eight, one, eight hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents. There is an E F T, um, to Butler Cohen for the EMS building, a five hundred and fifty thousand, nine forty-three thirteen, that I am in the midst of processing, so the total will be two million, three sixty-eight, three thirteen, twenty-four.
My question, find the bills.
All in favor? I believe we've covered everything, is there anything that we did not?
It'll be funny for a minute.
All right, we will adjourn. I just wanted to make y'all think.